I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me. Okay. On behalf of the chairman of the Charter Revision Commission, I will call the joint special meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Charter Revision Commission to order. I'd like to welcome the board, or the Charter Revision Commission members to this joint meeting. Thank you for your hard work and diligence over the last 12-plus months in doing all the work that you did. The Board of Selectmen, as you may be aware, just recently met to review some of your recommendations. And at this point, we would like to discuss some of those with you, if that would be okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since this is now a, a agended meeting, the interaction can be back and forth. It does not have to be just to the chair. Any member can speak if they'd like. Okay? Alright, so the Board of Selectmen, well, if I could refer all of you to your draft report and comments on Board of Selectmen recommendations. The Board of Selectmen agrees with the following things that you have put forward. Elimination of the town meeting. The discussion on term limits. The increase in special town meeting limit from 50,000 to 100,000. Discussion on the quorum of the town meeting. Removal of the position of captain and lieutenant from the police department. Discuss removal of the prohibition of the first selectman holding multiple positions. You are making, you've made no recommendation on that, and the selectmen are okay with that. Elimination of requirement of publication of full text and ordinance. The selectmen agree with you on your changes. Removal of Board of Selectmen's secretary. You are recommending no action, and the Board of Selectmen agree with you on that. And the Board of Selectmen agree that there should be advisory question. Shall the Board of Selectmen undertake a study regarding the establishment of a town manager form of government? So that is from your list. If we can go to the questions that was put forward by your board, the recommended ballot questions. The selectmen are in full agreement, agreement on questions number two. Shall the town charter be amended to replace an elect board of planning and zoning with an appointed planning and zoning commission? Question number three. Shall the town charter be amended to increase the term of the first selectman from two to four years? Question number four with one slight change. Shall the town charter be amended to set term limits for the first selectman and Board of Selectmen of Seymour? Question number six, as you have listed question number six. Shall the town charter be amended to correct grammar, spelling, terminology, statutory references, outdated provisions of the town charter, renumber sections, and make other and technical changes as recommended by the Charter Revision Commission? And then, as I had mentioned before, the advisory question number one with regard to the town manager form of government. Where the Board of Selectmen has some question, and I'd like to have some discussion on your questions, is question number one. While the selectmen agree with points one, two, four, five, and six, they would like to have a discussion on point number three to allow selectmen to participate in meeting via video conference and teleconference. And then, in question number five. While the selectmen agree with the first part of the question with regards to changes to the annual town meeting, or the elimination, excuse me, of the annual town meeting, they do have some question with regards to the, I guess, de-bifurcating? I don't know what the right word would be. But bring everything back into one budget, the town and the Board of Education. So I'm not sure where you folks would like to start. And then, we have a few other things that we'll get to, but these are just the, kind of the bigger ones. So. Well, let's, let's start with, start with an easy one first. Allow selectmen to participate in meetings via video conference or teleconference. So what was the boards, or the commissions, excuse me, thinking on, on that?
It's our understanding, based on some of the new regulations, sort of the buggering of the ratings, that as long as both parties, the party on the end and the party in the present, can interact with one another via teleconference or telephone or video conference, if you're all questioned, if you hear the answers from the parties directly, that in most cases, this has been good to be acceptable. Certainly in the role of non-collaboration, it's true. I don't know about the state statute with the large meetings, but certainly it seems to follow, but if we don't have to follow rules by some kind of code for meetings, I assume.
Okay. Any follow-up questions from any of the selectmen?
I think we have time for that. In that in case force that, there were new, from statutes, creating a possible new form.
Do you guys think, I don't know how you want to answer the question, but that we should put more restrictions on it? That, as an example, meetings need to be held here? Because there's going to be a difference in functionality between town hall versus the WPCA as an example? Whether it be with internet connections, conference phone, you know, things like that? That's what I mean. I mean, you know, there's a difference between, you know, I can conference anybody in on my phone. I'm not sure how good the reception's going to be compared to, you know, we have a conference phone.
That's a good point.
Yeah, and I don't want to speak with-
If you don't want like five people all on the same court.
And I don't want to speak for the whole board, but maybe if you add some, Ryan, you can jump in. Some rules to it? There's some type of-
Would that, would that be something that we do with the people?
Because theoretically, I could be sitting here by myself, and the six of them all call in.
Yeah. I was, a rule suggestion I was going to do, and I don't know if this is the right forum for that. I would say it could only take place if it is somebody in addition to the minimum number for quorum. And another rule change, or another rule I would like to see is, I think, I'm not as comfortable with someone just being on the phone. I think they should at least be on video. For a couple of reasons. One, because that's further proof that's an actual person that's supposed to be. And two, I think a big portion, especially throughout, through work on Board of Selectmen, is being able to transparently interact with the public. Though we can't literally interact with them, oftentimes, the public is here to speak to us. And I think we should respect that by allowing them to see the face of the person they're trying to speak to.
Can we, let's say we allow selectmen to participate via, oh, actually, it's just selectmen. Oh, I missed that. I thought we were talking about everybody.
Why wouldn't we allow the Board of Ed or another?
I think the Board of Ed does.
I, I missed that. I thought we were talking about everybody.
The Board of Ed already does that, from what I understand. WPCA does that.
Can we set, well, how does that work? If we just say the selectmen, and we say other boards can't?
Maybe this isn't-
I think some of the control are caught by the people. Let's see what happened with the Board's lightening and the expand law.
Is this something that we could be done on ordinance after the fact?
Well, that's gonna be my next question. If we allow this to happen, then can we set rules up by ordinance? That there has, it's required that there is a quorum in person? Or something along those lines? Because if it's the selectmen, technically, we can set this room up. Where we can have a screen right over the top of my head where people, you know, to Rob's point, people Skype in, and you can see, Stephon's not here, we can see his face right up on the, on the screen.
Two questions whether you can allow. I think you can, or research it, that's, that's one. Question directly.
I think it would be dependent on where that board or commission is holding their meeting, and if they have the technology available. So some might not have that option unless they move it to a location that has it.
So could we put it on the ballot as a blanket for all boards? And then, maybe pass an ordinance that, under part of the ordinance, it has to be conducted in this room? Or something along those lines?
But the Board of Ed meets at the high school, the media center, right?
Right.
They meet at, they move around.
Oh, okay.
So you guys have decided we're moving forward?
I'm just throwing ideas out there.
It's an idea. We're just chatting.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to just look into it, be done by ordinance. Because that question was supposed to find in the legislature. Looking at what you said.
So would the preference of this board be that we allow participation via video conference and teleconference? So that's in the charter? And then, this Board of Selectmen by ordinance kind of sets the rules and the parameters?
We can't really put that caveat in the, in the ballot question, really. Could we? I mean, we would kind of be having like a handshake agreement here to, to make the rules by ordinance, which is kind of outside of the scope of this meeting. It, it's good for information on whether or not we like the question, but it's not necessarily going to dictate what the question is.
Well, the question would be allow selectmen to participate in meeting via video conference and teleconference.
Right.
And then, we can create an ordinance for everyone else. That if they wanted to do that, then the meeting would need to be held here in the norma drama room, and that type of stuff.
Or we could say, you know, the media center, if they're set up for it, whatever rooms are specifically set up for it. It can't, because technically, a town board could have a meeting at Starbucks, or they could have a meeting in a park somewhere, as long as it's properly noticed. But that doesn't mean that you can hold a video conference there.
Right. I still think if we were to agree to do this, there needs to be parameters. So it's not the entire board that's calling into video conference. I don't think that would be as productive as one or two who have to call in because they're away or unable to attend for some other reason.
Well, so we'll now pass that back to you, Mr. Chairman, for discussion tomorrow night and return.
I know what I want to do with it.
Luckily, you can't say such things in a public meeting. Number five.
Wasn't everything that you recommended unanimous?
Yeah.
That's what I heard somebody say.
And actually, looking forward to the table of the table of statutes, the discussing meetings are in section one, that's 200. And it talks about meeting in person or by electronic means. So they're going to be able to start making discussions. State Connecticut does not prohibit these. So it's not directly prohibited. I don't know if it automatically suited to be valid, but certainly in general statute, it's not prohibited in section one, two.
But if you have it up, does it say anything about the entire participation being done via video or teleconference? Is there a number?
It's simply discussing anything whether it's personally or by an authority.
Right. It allows it, like the question is, just because it's legally allowed, should we do it?
I understand that.
Then you get into a layer of all these issues.
Right.
Once you allow this. And I've countered it in my previous job, and it didn't work. So in my experience with the call-ins- Yeah, no, understood. Yeah.
I think in the charter, it should be allowed, regardless, because it is not prohibited. And it should be allowed. But in the charter, as the town wants to set an ordinance, that certain meetings, you know, or certain arrangements have to be done by a person vote. That could be an ordinance, as opposed to the charter. I hate to see it prohibited when it's becoming the norm in many situations that in the-
With that being said, Brian, if it's in the general statutes and it's allowed, do we need it in our charter? Because then couldn't we just create the ordinance? These are the rules that the town of Seymour puts forth, based on what the Connecticut general statute says?
Yeah, I think so.
Permissible, but I think they may have to say, and the council's having to be clear, but it works.
To codify it, you know?
Yeah.
Other states, we're not trying to put question about that or confusion.
Right.
Second of all, okay, if it's over under the statute, okay, do you want to create an ordinance? Guess what? Won't they down as a ballot?
Well, no, that's, that's what I'm asking. And is that, is it better suited that way?
I mean, it's not a deal breaker, okay? It's just-
Oh, yeah, no, no, we know.
We researched it, tell us.
I think we're all on the same page with it. I think we all agree. It's just what's the best way to have it out there with some control, so it's not-
I think it's a permissible way to have it here. But I think the outcome of the ordinance doesn't mean that we don't want to allow the board's law. I think that's a question, even when the community is in most quarters, meaning you can.
Yeah.
That was my question. If it's allowed, now the next level is, do you want to allow it? If so, we're controlled to, um-
But could we stop it, though? I mean, if it's, if, right now, we have nothing.
Sure.
Yeah.
But if it's in, if it's in the statute-
Yeah, if we're saying we allow it, we can limit it.
Well, the statute allows it, doesn't mandate it.
You don't have to do it. It's, it's a, it's a make, it's a shell.
But we, since we have no language on it.
Well, if we had no language on it, then it's allowed.
How could we stop someone? Then it's allowed. So by putting this language in, we're saying right now that only, this question, only the selectmen can do it, no one else. See, that's my point.
No.
Possibly.
Well, if we don't, I think we would have to explicitly prohibit everyone else from doing it if the state statute addresses it and our charter only addresses the Board of Selectmen. That leaves a big gap of not being addressed at all.
It would be possibly perceived that way, but I don't-
Yeah, I think, I think that opens up, opens us up to a legal interpretation.
I think it's a permissible way to, I think it's actually working. The opposite is, if the Board's not, if the Board's not, it's a, it's a, it's a law. I don't think by only including the Board of Selectmen, the process, or that's the way to go.
I think the only reason we would want to include it in the charter is if we don't want to do it at all. And I don't think we're saying we don't want to do it at all, or if we want to put controls into how we want that to work in our town. So it's either no, not at all, or what controls do we want?
Controls should be ordinance, not charter.
And we're going to have to do that either way, whether or not this goes on the ballot.
Yeah, controls should be ordinance, not charter, because it's easy, well, not easy to, it's much easier to change an ordinance than it is to change the charter.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm starting to think we leave this off the ballot. Because then we, we also have an interesting case. If the voters say no, then we kind of shoot ourselves in the foot from being able to determine whether it's right or not. And we're going to have to go to ordinance to do all the real work on this anyways.
So, well, I think the selectmen's opinion is we take out just, allow selectmen to participate in meetings via video conference and teleconference? But could you maybe make some recommendations for the ordinance committee?
Well, couldn't I?
Outside of the charter?
Yeah.
Because we'll use the general statute that says it's permissible, so we'll, it's permissible, everybody can do it. We'll use the ordinance committee just to put some rules on it.
Obviously discussed.
Right, couldn't, couldn't you and I-
Yes, no, but I'm saying, but no, I'm saying, could you, some of your reasons, some of your thoughts why you made the decision that you did, just send those along, so now we're even on the wheel.
Advisor, yeah. Because you and I, as an ordinance committee members, could call for that to be discussed at our next ordinance committee meeting as soon as we want it to, so.
Yeah.
Which I would like to do.
So I think we all agree, it's, it's the way to go. I don't think everybody's debating, debating that.
I'd like to be on the record, I don't agree.
Okay, everybody but Al.
I think physical attendance matters at meetings. I think you're more present. To be physically present, you listen better, you read body language. The Board of Selectmen, I think you're elected to be present, physically present at meetings. And to make that effort. You miss meetings once in a while for job duties and family responsibilities. But I'm kind of old school like that. I'd like people to be in the room. I'd like to be able to have that conversation and that connection. I don't think you get that when you're broadcasted in. Also, electronics fail, things fail, and then you have an issue with some people can't participate.
That's a great point.
Electronic failures, I, malfunctions, I really don't, I don't think it's necessary.
And then you have executive session, and how do you know you're, you know, what are people in the room with?
I think it complicates things unnecessarily. That's, that's my thing.
I, I actually tend to agree with Al, and I just think, for the purpose of our discussion, no, I mean-
I want to take that in for a second.
Well, I think if you look at my history and record of everything I've ever said here, I tend to favor showing up. I think that's like the number one most important thing.
Yeah.
I've missed one meeting, and it had very important extenuating circumstances. So you'll not find a bigger proponent of showing up to meetings than myself. But with that said, I, I also think that it's outside of the scope of this discussion anyways, because I think if we're going to do anything, it should be by ordinance.
Yeah. Alright, so we're all good on that one?
Yeah.
Okay, and I thought that was going to be an easy one. Question number five. Shall the town charter be amended to change the budget process, including elimination of the annual town meeting, so that the budget will go directly to referendum? Like I said, we all agree with that. Where we fall is, and, to combine the town and Board of Education vote at the referendum.
Make that another question.
So are you, we would recommend, or ask, or whatever the term is, that you split that into two individual questions? You don't have to raise your hand, Bill. It's, it's okay.
I don't agree with you, Bill. The point process behind this is that two separate divisions, two long districts, so divided. If you ever get a thing with a cut, you can go to the town board, they're seeing us. And two long, I'm just imagining, from my experience, I'm older than that. And we're finding, you know, two options from a district to a bus, in a town. And essentially, you've got a fifty-seven mile distance, but, and it needs to be looked at, yeah. And totally different. And, I mean, I can tell you honestly, in my municipality, where the first time I was consulted, I don't think there's one. That's, that's, because it separates them, it's, it's just too much. It's not this hot, the board has been getting cut. And so, the county vote passed, the side of the league, the side of the people who support that, there's like third, knowing, not in the NFT, but in the city, it's sort of a matter of the county, the district. And where that goes, we do not know, but it's sixty to seventy-five percent in the entire county. There, we need to cut. But through cooperation, like, including the board, and share services, and, and clearly, you've got to do something to change in the town. Two markets. That's only the, how far is that to go? There are those people, there are that, expect. We know our best, probably with the lead advocate, and the town is kind of under that. And quite honestly, the one district that has advocacy, the best, that's, that's the only way to make this town better. The town's demographic is changing. You've got a minority population, and there's a minority age. And I'm not going to go through the whole bit, but I don't have any kids in school. That is, it's always going to be right, and it's a problem, and I'm not, it's six hundred people that vote for the board, just coming out. But, God bless us, because it's a big business, we've got to keep it honest, and pretty selective. A lot of projects, one, a few separate projects. The board has, we need to try to communicate on the other, it's a new concept, we're going to prosecute the board. We have to relax that, and the process, and the people that are in the places, to come in and be reasonable, and do it, do it in a way that's reasonable. It's the only way, and it's the way we realize, and it's the only way we're going to get it, so it can be determined.
The question is, is it tomorrow, we will discuss, going out, a few questions?
Yeah, who decides on the, on the questions? The Board of Selectmen, correct?
At this point, you can pray about whether or not you would like them to consider, in recognition of the question, that's a bit of a back.
Yes, so, yeah, we would like to have it split into two questions. Yep.
I, if I just want to say, because I'm the only one really barking about this. In my seat, I agree with you, Bill, 200 percent. The problem is, what you say doesn't necessarily resonate with the average voter, because they have no idea. They're not looking at it as a conglomerate business.
But if you never take steps, right, it's a problem, and the town board, and the state, and the theater. I mean, you know, this, like-
Well, I like to, the one thing that concerns me with one question is you get a lot of people that want to keep it separate, so they vote no. And it wipes out the changes that we need to have for the rest of the process.
But over time, I would receive, just like people have kind of taken in stride that it's too separate now.
Right.
It was probably an issue when it first started, right?
Right.
And it's kind of, but, to Bill's point, I, I think you're shining a light on the fact that it's separate. And it almost does hit an us versus them, depending on what side you may be on. And not, instead of seeing it as, from a holistic approach, this is the whole town. This is everybody. Our kids are our kids. And for a town that does a lot for its children, probably the most of any town that I know of, it's kind of sad that it is cut in half like that. But Phil says it's true, and I felt it too, and I heard it, that people will go after the Board of Ed budget, and it's, it's not right.
We, we don't have to look very far at all to see where the town side is able to easily weaponize people against the Board of Education budget. I, I think, to your point earlier, Kurt, about breaking down the silos, I think this, this helps. I think it goes a ways towards helping that.
I, I-
And, and I think it's important for public perception to see the town as a unified front and not have the constant public bickering between Board of Ed and the town side. And I think this helps. I, I understand, Trish, completely your point. But I, I think this is a good step. And at the end of the day, the Board of Ed could be the whipping boy on either, on either method.
Well, to Kurt's point, just be cautious whether you separate it out or put it in, because I would support it either way, as far as me voting. However, if you do, let's just say, on the rare occasion on this issue I'm right, you will find the whole charter revision voted down on that one question.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we split the two questions. So that we don't lose the other changes to the budget process over that. So I think we all agree the changes to the budget process are, are needed and everything else.
That's a great point by Trish. So it sabotages the whole time and effort that's put in by the commission and by us.
Right. Yeah, there's nothing, I've sat there, and I would never do it again, because my, when I sat there, I got voted down. And there's nothing worse than putting that effort in and having none of it go through.
So that's why we'll split it. Okay, Mr. Chairman?
There will be discussions tomorrow. No guarantees.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Oh, of course not. Do what you guys got to do. That's why you're there.
We're here to work, you know, this, you know, we have this, I mean, the bottom line is, this whole thing is, we can, you can say, let's do this, you can say, we're going to do that, okay?
Right.
The voters of this community, okay, the ones who make the time, it's about one. And you know what?
Management of the parks. So now I think it's cumbersome where, you know, community services, so Mary wants to put a program in. She actually has to apply to parks for use of the parks. That's more the side I was looking at where if they had control, they can just essentially slot programming in. They would have control of the schedule and things like that.
There's a generation that is coming out here with some interest in parks. We need a public school, school for education, there are things that any kind of one of them. And there are other people, I mean, you have to keep a monthly process, people on the, you know, these chapters, they're working on, you know, and you do.
Car civilian, right.
The whole line yard and it's, it's really quick in addition, the anti, and not a lot of requests or message from proof of that. From the other side of the grid, but you're always handling it, it's never going to.
Right.
It used to be an issue before we had the online calendar.
Oh, yeah.
And it was, it was kind of a mess. You and I know that, we worked on the.
I got started actually while I was in from the, what kind of this one?
Right. Yeah.
See, this is where the conversation would have been good before our meeting, but to your point, touche, okay.
So anyway, I'm, as you can see, I, I'm real like.
Hmm?
And in this case, I'm gonna say, I don't want to say this many things.
Okay.
As far as their point of view, and I'm a person from, I've been on more than, I've worked on the park, I've worked with people, like kids around the high school, doing it all time. I mean, every different.
So in, in a case like this, although we've made that recommendation, they would just report back to us?
Yeah, they're gonna.
Just exactly what they have.
They're gonna submit their comment before, and now, when you get their comment before you have, you understand.
Right.
Exactly, and they're.
Right. Okay, so anybody else on the combining, ever? Got some.
Um, when Mary met with us, she didn't want to combine aging with livable communities. She wanted to combine aging with rec.
What?
That's what she presented to us.
Really? Aging with rec?
Because they're both a community set up.
So that leaves liv- livable communities out there, and I wanted to talk about livable communities a little bit because I have served on there as Sandra.
Not even in the chart.
Currently does, right, but I don't understand why aging and livable communities wouldn't come up to be combined because, one, livable communities, though, a board full of very well-intentioned people, doesn't get a lot done, and they don't have the teeth to really get a lot done. At the same time, there is very few communities in Connecticut that have livable communities, commissions, almost none, because part of something, part of what we were doing while I was on there, was looking for other commu- community commissions to, you know, base some of our, you know, like our mission statement and our values off of. And it was very difficult to find, and there was like three in the whole state, and they were in very wealthy communities where they had a dedicated staff member to like being the livability coordinator or whatever, or have you. I think that there is value to having a livability, a livable communities aspect to what we do as a town, but I think it might be better served combining with a commission on aging, aging, which is, I believe, mandated by state statute, kind of guiding their focus a little bit towards livable communities as opposed to having their own board, which really can't do anything.
Well, I agree.
So I, so my question is, why did you guys not recommend it?
From Mary?
I didn't bring all my stuff with me. We got a letter from Bonnie Woods. Well, I mean, aging is a big issue in, in every town. And it should be separated.
But you're okay with the current way of things, which as you know, livable communities commission is not very effective.
Bless you.
I mean, you know as well as I know that they're not very effective, and I think we could get more livable communities initiatives if it were put, if it were combined with a commission with a little more teeth. That's, that's my opinion, from, from being on it.
Senior services.
That's commissioning the aging, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Commissioning the aging livable communities.
I mean, they go hand in hand, whether you like it or not, I mean, they really do. Livable communities are for everybody, but it's a strong emphasis on our elderly community.
But we're trying to build the, we're trying, we're trying not to be elderly. None.
Well, I, I think, not that I've been to a livable communities meeting, I don't think necessarily that's the right angle to not include them at all, I mean, I understand that you want to draw in other generations and, and that as well, but aging is a part of our community, so they are, they should be a part of livable communities as well.
So livable communities right now is like, there, when I was on there, from the updates I've been given since then, it's like ninety-five percent focused on the elderly now. And, and it is, to Sandra's point, a good initiative to make it broader and, and use it for, you know, people with disabilities or young people trying to figure out, you know, things for young people to do, or transportation needs. But my only point is that I think that the livable communities commission needs a little bit more teeth, or needs to be more, more thought of at a town level. And I think combining it with a more, you know, traditionally important board might help.
I, I, I agree with Stefan because there's, I mean, we have to put them with someone, I believe, if it's not aging. I thought aging made sense, but how many years has livable communities been together?
There are so many issues with that that aren't being handled. Now, but they're applying yet, can you find it? Sure.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you for asking me for my thoughts on working the commission on aging and the whole community's mission. Feel that both commissions should remain separate from each other. The work of both entities is not mutually exclusive. The work of the livable communities mission in promoting an exclusive community, the quality of life is a priority, priority will certainly have an impact on many needs of our aging population. The work of the commission on aging and identifying and analyzing the services for our aging population in our community will assist livable communities as they work through the components of a livable community. I'm concerned merger with the root of focus of our aging population. The work of the livable communities mission is expansive and long range. It must focus on all ages of population. In Seymour, based on our census, available fourteen percent of our population is over sixty-five. As the Bay Harbor Boomers age, this percentage will increase. One quarter of all households in Seymour have an additional, have an individual residing there over the age of sixty-five. In addition, the percentage of very elderly, eighty-five plus, is projected to double in the next ten years. Many times a senior sixty-plus is caring for very elderly person. Family life is impacted in many ways. You must continue to act as a resource and provide support for all ages and seniors. Bonnie Woods.
So that was an argument to keep them separate.
Definitely.
So anything else from the selectmen?
I think that you have to look into this in the best interest of the town. It's great to get opinions, but ultimately, you know, we're making a decision.
Well, Bonnie's in the, she's currently in the municipal agent.
Yeah.
She has a great perspective on it, obviously, she has a very inside perspective, and I know that she's on, or at least was on, livable communities as well, so she, she's seen it from both sides, but.
And did you get any feedback from the director, community services, or no? Mary?
Yeah, she wanted it combined with recreation.
With recreation.
Well, with aging with rec.
Livable communities with rec, or aging with rec.
Aging with rec.
That's, okay. Yeah, that's strange, but, okay.
That just seems odd.
Okay. All right, so then we'll, go ahead. No, no.
Do you have another comment on it?
No, mine's gonna wrap it up. So you, that's what I'm saying, you go.
No, you, you brought up, um, I just wanna bring this up because we had an entirely different interpretation of the prohibition on the first selectmen holding other elected offices. That's not how it was projected, I think in the way you bore a selectmen minutes, which I took and integrated with Trish's bullet points, I'm assuming.
Right.
And they both said the same thing.
Which is?
Uh, removal of prohibition of first selectmen holding other elected offices. It took that very long. Yeah, governor.
Yeah. That was the notes, but, yeah.
Which were all holy, for what people.
No, no, no. That day will never come. Well, so that, that, that's just how the minutes were taken, but we all know that we met.
No, I, I.
Well, that's why I wanted to clear it, clarify it, because you can't, because that's been turned into, you know, I want to be first selectman and state comptroller at the same time, which. Yeah, Bill just laughed, so, yeah.
Anything else?
I, I hate to do this, I still have a couple more questions, I think we can get through them quickly, though.
Absolutely.
Did, I don't know if we ever really addressed in this portion of the meeting, why you guys recommended just the board of library directors be reduced to five people?
Actually, I have that, I have that X.
Well, that's one of the few questions I have, so.
That's the first one, that's the first X, too. Skip that over.
Yeah.
When we, when we met with the, those various commission committees, and we talked about what they did, because there's been a number of people that they felt they needed in order to accomplish the goals. For example, there were nine, and I think there's some committees that, wonders who needed, who needed the people to, to hit the goal on. In addition, other committees had other things that they said that were necessary under the operation of your commission committee. Rather than putting, it felt that it ties into, in many cases, with what we have said about the term limits as well, under term limits. That sometimes people get on commissions and stuff, and assume that they do, and they're like, and we need to draw up more.
Have you been on a term commission, try getting off?
So they, 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 you know, people have said, one of the reasons that we don't follow, that we don't get enough on appearance is there's no chance for those people because there's no term limits. So people that are on there, as we've said previously, name recognition, et cetera, keep people on the boards and on elected positions for, for law. Coming out of a world of nonprofit organizations, like you said, the term limits are of name, across what we try to do in that world, in order to get moved on to that.
Yeah.
We don't want people staying on for thirty years and haven't had a new, an original idea.
Then, so, if you don't mind, then why not, finance and education as well?
Yeah.
Why just select? I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just, it just cares about.
I argue for that, that we, we, and if consensus was that we don't do it on all of the elects. Um, I, I'd argue in favor of that, because we dream that if we need consensus, we just pick one place, and we're starting to.
Yeah, no, no, understood.
So, uh, that would be the, the discretion of, of the bar, too. Hard to get people, but you know, the charities don't have an opening to get the different people. But likewise, we could cut me back on the number of people on some of the boards, because basically on our discussions with the, with members of the board, the chairs of the board, they're saying that they needed to have this number of people to accomplish the goals. So we've got to overwork those people who are involved.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I totally understand your point from the elected boards' perspective, but I think from appointed boards, and I guess I could be in the minority here, I think just about everybody in this room serves on more than one appointed board, almost certainly. And I would, I would almost want to ask everybody, do, do you think that a five-person board is less effective than a seven? Because I could tell you, our sustainability committee, which Rory and I are on, is a five-person board, and that's been very effective, in my opinion, compared to other boards I've had, as a five-person board. And I've been on seven or more-person boards that have been much less effective, so I don't know if that's just my.
No, I, I, I agree with you, so.
I agree, yeah, more voices, more takes.
And to the point, and to the point of not getting people involved, I, I definitely get that, too, and I, I'm a big fan of getting more people involved. But I, I've also seen a, a willingness from some of these people, like a lot of us, who are on three, four appointed boards, to more than happily get off one of the boards if it will allow somebody new to get on. I mean, I would give up my seat on just about any board, except this one, in a heartbeat, if somebody was actually gonna be able to, to put a lot of their time and effort into it. Because if you're spread, you know, as thin as a lot of us are, you know, work a full-time job, then you're an elected official, then you have four appointments, how much of your time can you really give to that appointment anyways? And then when you have these seven or nine-person boards, people like me, or Trish, or Anne Marie, or Al, get thrown on a lot of these seven or nine-person boards, just because they need a body, and we're here when we decide that we have to appoint somebody. I mean, it literally happens, you know what I'm saying? And then I feel bad, because I can't be as effective on some of these boards, because it's my twelfth priority, you know what I'm saying? Um, so I, I just, that's, that's my only question with it.
I mean.
I'm a perfect examiner.
Yeah, I know Pat's on a million boards, yeah.
I mean, you don't have those fingers and toes on each of your, or your feet, okay? The name of the board that I've been on in the last thirty years, including the first election board. So I, I understand where you're coming from, but Jen, who's not here tonight, who's also a member, Jen Magid, she's also a member of the board of education. But she gave a real good argument at the start of the model work, though, that the committees and subcommittees of the board of education, um, have to do, and.
Well, I, I, I agree with you, I, I think elected boards, I'm okay with leaving, I'm, I'm just talking about appointed boards exclusively. Sorry.
Sorry.
No, yeah, I, I, I think nine people on the board of ed is not outrageous by any stretch, because they do have a lot of subcommittees, and you can't have every subcommittee be the same people.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I'm just, I was talking specifically to appointed boards, sorry.
I'm just, um, I'm, I'm seeing, I'm, have you had to, just, just, to back in first, you, when we spoke with the chair, there's one that's in favor of, of the number of people. Uh, and we did not have enough, our needs, you know, in return for, say, education.
It's funny, because when I'm listening, and I, I get it from a, from a rational perspective and from the busy, you know, boards or committees, but at the same token, it, it almost sounds like people are just clamoring to get on this stuff. And I can't find, I, I've been on strategic planning since its inception, it's a lot of work. I agree with Al, having five people, we could have gotten it done, just as we did with seven. It's two less voices and having to come to a consensus. And when we have had vacancies, it takes me months to find, if not, almost a year to find someone to replace. So there are not as many people clamoring to get on necessarily as one would think. I've sat on the board of finance, where we've had to have the board of selectmen appoint someone, because we can't find anybody that wants to do it. So it's not people lined up at the door.
Don't get, one of the ways that we could discuss a lot of, you know, we, we call it, we're, we take that, they'll have not more than, and of course, we don't have seven, um, you know, they're a lot. You know, that's one way of, 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 not more than seven members, or, so, uh, the way that we're having to put a little bit of, um, particularly, not more than.
And then, and just ask, and I don't know if I, it just got kind of wrapped up, but why just a selectman with term limits? Just, again, just out of curiosity.
I think that question was asked, and.
Well, thank you, Con, well, thank you, Counselor, I'd like to re-ask the question again until I get an answer. Let me rephrase, I didn't like your answer, so maybe I can have an answer?
Okay, well, I'm gonna give you the trick, what I gave you before. I don't think.
Aston answered.
A big reason other than we wanted to change.
She didn't beat somebody.
You know, let, let's see what happens with the board of selectmen, use them, you know, have any degree, if you will, and.
Yep.
Maybe it can be expanded.
Oh, that's a good answer.
Then you'd need another charter revision to change it, and that's quite difficult, so I don't know that I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I don't agree with that strategy.
Well, it's better than, it's better than the first answer.
If you do it to one major board, it probably should be done to the, the major boards in the town.
Aston answered, you're priceless. And then how do we remove a chairman of a committee, or a commission?
Well.
You mean right now?
It went right by, it just went right by you, I mean, right this second.
For appointed, you have, for appointed.
No, no, Pat, I'm kidding, I'm talking about you, and you're Aston answered, Tom. You're Aston answered.
Okay.
Wouldn't have to ask Pat twice, see you later.
All right, if I might ask, my last couple.
Got a few more questions.
Okay.
You brought that up, but that, that's a very, very interesting point. I, I took delivery of looking at about five different charters, okay? And believe it or not, okay, every charter that I looked at has a clause in a removal from the appointed official, but has no clause or no language in the charter to remove.
Okay. Just kind of circling back to the question, we danced around a little bit in the board of selectmen meeting, why is it in here now, why did you guys up the new chief to a five-year contract?
Yeah, Bill.
Bill, please.
The, the reason, the reason is simple, the new chief got out of, got out of the field contract. We discussed it, we, quite honestly, two years, we've known those days apart, but it's not really what we've got a sufficient time. We're able to change things, try to change the culture, try to, try to get, see, everybody on board, and that's kind of what walks around, the old chief came in, and they agreed with him for six years. And look, um, not that that's happened now, but that's, um, true, it's, I wasn't quite a hundred percent. But anyway, we thought that, after reading that, the next chief played that one, is that he's had his three years, he's signed on, and that's it. But we thought it was going forward, let's say, from one of the regions, leave our state chief, you gotta go off, or you left somewhere. A chief with a partner needs about five years to, the first year, just like an elected official, the first year is against the people that, second year is coming up with ideas, and then trying to get the guys around you with input. Then you've got two years left on the program. The ultimate slave is to give you some of the five-year contracts, and you're not complying to, to the contract, they're violated, and you're not pleasing some of the positions, things like that. The policy is always there, and that's because of the leadership, and that, but five years of their track, to try to establish, establish yourself, let's say. And changing, get their culture changed, get their program revised, because now, it's nobody gonna give a bad example, they're just gonna have to run out. We've got, it's high-tech, there's a lot of science involved, and all of that, their time and money, to try to get kind of different culture, but anybody that's sitting in that chair, not just sitting in that chair, anybody that's sitting in that chair needs enough time to look at options, or things, to look at research, to look at all of that.
Yep.
And two years goes by, look.
Okay, I, I appreciate, I appreciate that answer, that's all I was looking for.
And not a lot of theories, but according to the juice, according to them, it wasn't a five-year period.
Cool, yeah, I was just looking for that clarification, I just, I just was curious about it.
You can stop with, um, two years.
You know.
Get all your people, and get all your town going, and get everything going, all kinds of, sort of, you know, something like that, but the town only has two.
You've got.
Yeah.
State kind of state.
Yeah.
You know, you, you wanna see those things through, you can't do that in two years.
But that, I mean, that's two or three months.
You're twelve months, fifteen months into your first term, as a, as the first selectman.
And then you're running again.
You're looking at, hey, yeah, I gotta slide campaign again for your election.
Well, Bill, that's the way you wanna think about it, I'm sure that you've talked about it, that's Ed Hendricks, probably, Ed Hendricks calling out there, about Robert Quinn, five to seven years for deep change, otherwise you can't do it. That's how long it takes, that's eight of, that's twenty, over twenty years.
That was, I was, I was telling you, I was, I was on, in the first two year, I was probably seven years, and that's what it took. And once he came there, and that's going back to, that's going back to data, so once he came there, trying to get out of the mom and pop police department's calendar, especially after he raises it, it's a while to take years. A lot longer than three years, and finally, and now you've got to fill the rest of the department, you've got to, you've got to have a guy, you have education, value, et cetera, et cetera. And it just takes a while to set yourself up.
Great, I had one more question. If you look at section three point four vacancies in elected offices, under E, term of appointment, you guys crossed out, until a successor is duly elected at the next regular election and is qualified, the person then elected to fill the unexpired term, so shall, shall serve the remainder of the term, you replace that with, for the portion of the term remaining unexpired. Is that to be read as doing away with the way it's currently done, where if it's a staggered board, they're up for reelection automatically the next time, even if it's a longer term? Is, is, does this change get rid of that policy? That might be state statute, I'm not sure.
Well, I think one of the issues we've had, um, with some of those boards, where some are four and two-year terms.
Yeah.
We ended up getting screwed up at one point, I forget who I talked to about, because someone was finishing a term.
Well, we had that with board of finance, very recently, right, I, I know I brought that up.
So if you had a, you leave, and you're on a four-year term, you actually would finish.
All four years.
The four-year term.
So that's something we.
Not just bounce out at the end of the election.
So that's something we can change, that was, that's done at a town level, because I always thought that was a state statute.
Yeah, I'm looking at Ronnie's, he's here, and I think, I mean, he, he discussed this, he changed that, and we have, so, uh, something that we can, I think.
That's okay.
I think it was, to me, it was.
Okay, then.
Other than that's four years, because I think you and I had that.
Yeah, so, I mean, my question is, are you guys all cool with that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm cool with that, too, that's fine. And then just one other little thing, and this isn't really a question, I went back and reread the, um, the succession plan for first selectmen, and it's actually, the board of selectmen picks a first selectman before they, before anything, from any person. It doesn't have to come from the board of select, the current board. So, so when there's a vacancy in first selectmen, the board of selectmen may pick any, you know, in this case, a Republican elector of the town, whether it's from the board of selectmen or not. So we don't have to fill the vacancy on the board first, you just, you just pick somebody, and then if it comes from the board of selectmen, then you fill, that you backfill that. So that was just one thing I just looked up, just wanted to put that up there. I rest my case. I don't have anything else.
All right, any other comments? Any comments from the members of the charter revision commission?
Thank you for your hard work.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, really.
I know it's a lot of time, I agree. Job well done, so you guys will meet tomorrow, and then you'll resubmit a report to us, and then we, maybe we'll hold a discussion meeting next week, just to get ahead of this. While it's kind of fresh, um, in our minds, so.
Okay.
So with that, on the other agenda, as I lost. So at that point, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion, John.
Second.
By Anne Marie, second by Al, on favor?
Aye.
Close, Steve, Chair was I, close the meeting, nine thirty-five.